6:02, I'd like to call the November 2nd City Council Workshop to order. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The current expense budget gap, the state and federal legislative agenda, and stormwater utility. Ms. Kilgore, you get to lead.
You want me to just jump right in, huh? Okay. Let's see. So, I just put it together. ... in the budget right now. And it is affected by the street fund and a couple of other things, but basically, the hole in the budget in the revenue side is in current expense. So that's what we're going to look at tonight in depth. So, this is just a recap of the total budget. It's about 7.5 million for current expense. And the recurring revenues are about $283,000 less than the recurring expenditures that are in the budget right now. We are fine as far as the ending fund balance goes. Get my cleaner out here. So, ending fund balance, our policy minimum is 20% of recurring revenues, which would be $1,051, and we are, we are fine with that. We're at about 1.475. This is just a quick look at the revenue side of things. The distribution, again, the bulk of our budget comes from tax revenues, so about four and a half million. And then... You making it bigger?
I'm going to make it bigger. It's my job here.
Thank you. Yay, thanks. And then licenses and permits are the second largest at about $300,000. Then our state entitlements, which are about 222, which that used to be like 800, 900,000. It would be $1,000,000, $1,000,001 a year now with inflation if we were still getting what we were getting before. Things changed with the tab taxes and stuff. Miscellaneous, building inspection, federal grants, and then a bunch of minor little And on the expenditure side, you can see our largest place that we spend money in current expense is in the police department at over $2 million budgeted there. Second largest is actually transfers out to other funds. That's for primarily debt service, so the cars bond payment, commercial drive payment. And then the other big chunk of that is the interfund transfers to equipment replacement fund. So, the next biggest area is fire and EMS at just under $1 million for next year. And then you can just see kind of the progression down from there. Some notable items, I'm sure you recognize these slides, I just thought it'd be good to recap. We took the Buxton contract out for next year because we're replacing it or proposing to replace it with a $5,000 kind of version of reports.
Yeah, I'll explain a little bit after, folks that weren't here the last council made them. How Buxton was proposed to us was not only that it was a data solution, but that they would help make the contacts with the business sector pretty much across the United States. Early on, they were, but as of late, and I don't know why it's mainly with us, I've warned them to pick up your performance and it hasn't been happening, but there's been some big fish that we've been trying to give them to college places and they just have not been responsive and I've had to do a lot of the legwork to it. And yeah, I get the data from Buxton, but if we're just talking about a data solution, you can get the exact same data from a program called Esri Business Analyst, and the base on it is about $1,000. And then they, they basically charge you for certain credits for certain reports. So, I think we could get away with that for altogether $5,000, and I think that's on the high side. It could end up even being a little less than that. But just with some of the developments as of late, I just don't feel we're getting our money's worth long-term and continuing with Buxton. And there was the clause in the contract that as it nears the anniversary date, we can put notice on them that we're opting out. So at this point in time, since the majority of the outreach work I'm doing for that amount of money, it doesn't really make sense, so.
Okay, so we have the $5,000 in there for Esri instead of $50,000 for Buxton. We have our donations that we have promised to the World War II Memorial of $5,000, which is the second half of what we promised, a total of $10,000 to them. $5,000 we paid in 2017, $5,000 we'll pay in 2018. And then the City of Walla Walla Swimming Pool, this is the second payment of $12,500 out of a total of four. Our commitment to them was $50,000 over four years, so. We have 35 and a half FTEs budgeted in there right now. We had 46 actually requested. And there are a couple of new positions in the budget in that 35.5. One is an additional patrol officer, and the other is an administrative position to help out with planning and community development and building permits and that kind of thing. So basically servicing that side of the building. Servicing the customers for that side of the building, we'll put it that way.
Oh, and I want to add something else there because we did approach it from a policy perspective, so I feel it's important to add to it. At least in the current iteration of this budget, there's $3,000 allocated for the light vehicles, so.
Some other notable items, the equipment, I told you that a big chunk of the expenses in the interfund transfers quadrant of, or section of the pie chart were for equipment replacement transfers. So, next year, we have in there right now $221,000 for fire and EMS, which includes $80,000 to put towards a wildland fire vehicle to replace one of our ailing, failing, old...
Over 30-year-old.
Yeah.
Wildland vehicles.
Yeah. Then we have $62,000 right now for the police, and I think that was primarily just servicing the replacement of the vehicles that are currently in their fleet. Building inspection and travels, $23,000. And that again is for the building inspector vehicles and the travel cars, just the annual amount. And then parks is, there's $10,000 in there to put towards parks vehicle replacement. Total replacement contributions from current expense fund are over $300,000. So, it's a pretty good chunk. But we're playing catch-up because we weren't funding this in the past, so for a few years it's going to be high like that. So, back to that gap that we had in the recurring expenditures exceeding the recurring revenues, looking at possible solutions. We could just not add the staff that we have in there, the two positions that we have added, and not replace the equipment that's failing. That's always an option. We could talk about looking at a utility tax on our water and wastewater utilities. That's an option that I, our city is one of very few that doesn't actually do that right now. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more in depth here in a few minutes. And then there's also the transportation benefit district tab tax, which we've talked about in the past. It's like a $20, $20 per tab fee.
So, if I could add up to there, so where, the way that would happen is it can only go to the streets, et cetera, and, but it would help our current expense because we would take less out of current expense.
Exactly, yeah.
And what are the, you may be, if, tell me if you're going to cover this in a minute, but what are the bounds on what we can use the water and wastewater tax on?
It actually just, it's just like any other tax revenue, it just gets deposited into the current expense fund and it can be used for any general city services.
Does it all come?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
You know, I asked you this question last council, and I apologize, it's going to take a while for this to, yeah, soak into me, but there's the capital budget, and then we have the expense. And then when we talk about the expense budget, we also talk about capital items kind of within the expense budget. I mean, in my thinking, buying a police cruiser or something, that's a capital expense versus paying the light bill and salaries and whatnot. So, that's okay, you know, I mean, it's here or there. What's interesting is on the capital side, it's funded completely, but it's mainly funded by grants, loans.
If you're talking about capital projects, like road projects, infrastructure projects, those we fund as much as we possibly can, of course, with grants, and then low-interest loans would be next for the portion that we can't fund out of our local funds.
So, on the capital side, when we talk, when we talk about capital, we're talking about streets mainly and other sewage treatment plant, what a big...
When I talk about capital in the budget, I'm talking about projects like you're discussing and also large equipment purchases. So basically, purchases over $5,000, things that you would typically capitalize if you were a gap, if we were a gap basis accounting entity, things that we would capitalize.
And so my point, I think where I'm headed with this is that we're talking about being 270,000 short on the expense. It wouldn't, my, yeah, my thought process on this, it wouldn't take much to move something out of the capital side over to make up that difference. And I guess an example would be that you would, and I know this, you're sort of chasing your tail here a bit, but you may put off or not do a road repair, or you may make a decision, so instead of increasing taxes or, you know, I think, we need, at least the two staff members are very important to have to, for the business, but on the other hand, 200,000 on the capital side is a very small percentage, correct? If you look at the overall...
Let me step in.
Okay.
You're exactly correct that we could make the $280,000 shortfall by, by, by not putting money away to replace equipment or to not do certain kinds of repair because...
Can I interject there really quickly?
Let me finish.
Okay.
By not doing certain kinds of repairs, but what that does is that extends out our ability to do basic maintenance in, in the city, so.
Deferred, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, right now, I think, Robert, we're talking about our road replacement is about a 200-year cycle?
Yeah, we did some rough numbers in our local roads, not, not the arturials.
Yeah, but, so, so, if we, if we, we can, we can defer, but eventually, if we fail to fund replacement of equipment, especially major equipment, like fire trucks or road graders or other big pieces of equipment, the street sweepers, those kinds of things, what happens is, is that then when we have a failure, then we don't have the funds available to do that kind of, that kind of purchase to deal with that, and, and then we end up in the cycle of doing emergency work on streets or our facilities trying to keep up with the repair cycle.
The, what I was going to add in there is that there actually, actually the only capital that is being funded by the current expense in this budget is the vehicle replacements. There are no projects funded by current expense, so...
So, my thinking is, is, I'm, you know, I'm thinking of redoing a street out here that's going to cost 1.2 million or something, I don't know, something. And we could say, well, we're going to spend only a million, not 1.2. What you're saying though is that stuff is locked down pretty tight. It's, it's the, it's the replacement items that are more of the variable, it's, the other items are more either tied to a, a bond issue, a grant, or some sort of a revenue buy, yeah.
Mm-hmm. We, we don't typically put hardly any local funds into our projects if we can at all help it. I mean, because we don't have local funds to put into them, so...
The only, the only one we have is really the chip ceiling is one that is...
And that's with REIT funds.
Yeah.
REIT funds...
And that's not a lot of money in that, yeah.
Yeah, they can't be used for maintenance, they can be used for capital improvement, but not for maintenance, so REIT funds really have to be used for projects.
Right.
So that wouldn't help our hole in the current expense.
Okay.
The other thing is that it crossed my mind when you were talking about this, that perhaps you were referring to possibly transferring, like you said, a one, instead of doing a $1.2 million project, doing a $1 million project and using that other 200 for this hole. But we, our financial policies don't really allow that because that 200,000 is one-time money. It's fund balance and it's not recurring, it's not sustainable, so it can't be used to pay for recurring expenditures.
You're taking care of a problem that you're going to have next year or, yeah, and we worry, yeah, okay.
So, the whole, the whole, the whole philosophy is that what we bring in every year needs to cover what we go, what goes out every year as far as things that happen every year, like payroll, like utility expense, like, you know. So, it either means, it either means decrease what's going out on a rate, on an, on an annual basis, or it means increase what's coming in. Okay, so these were...
I did have a, one quick question, hopefully. As far as the transportation benefit district, we have a couple options besides just the tax on the tabs. There was another option where you're, was it a gas tax or a sales tax?
Yeah, it was a sales tax.
A sales tax.
Yeah.
And I'd originally kind of asked, is there a way that we could like take the edge off of a tab tax by giving like a $5 to $10 tax increase in addition to like a very small sales tax increase? Was that an option?
Well, I, I mean, the, the main option you have there is as far as the tabs, that can be approved with council. If you're going to go the sales tax route, it has to go on the ballot.
Ah, okay.
So, so that's the caveat there. And I'm foreshadowing a little, we'll get into this presentation later, but at least a recommendation from staff at this point is not to go that route because frankly, the utility tax route with the water and wastewater, earlier, I didn't recommend that because frankly, I figured we were already caught in that because most cities do that, so I was a little shocked on that. So, but you'll, you'll see the comparison later, I don't want to occupy too much time on that.
Okay.
Okay, so these were a few possibilities that we came up with. So, looking at the first one, don't add staff or replace equipment. Our police staffing is, it's really, it's really too low for, to be safe. So, we really do need the additional coverage, and we do have staff that are actually concerned for their safety while they're out there. And, and they have, they have a right to be. So, we really do feel like we need to add an officer, not only for the safety of the current officers, but also to keep overtime down and also to keep retention of current employees, because if they're not feeling safe, they're not going to want to stay here very long.
And what reinforces the sense, it was in a previous council meeting agenda pack, and it's actually on the budget website, is please read that report on the police department by the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, because it goes over all the issues pretty in depth.
And to be honest, one isn't really enough, but that's all we feel like, I mean, we feel like that's a start. That's maybe if we can add one this year and then another one next year, you know, I don't know.
Well, and one of the things I'll talk about, but this is a longer-term strategy, is I am in talks with the moment, and it's not going to happen immediately, but it's out of the low, but with Walla Walla University about throwing us something, because it is standard practice at most universities. Where I went to school was where there's a payment in lieu of taxes or some sort of service agreement, so. But however, in order to fix this budget cycle, it definitely wouldn't be occurring now. That would be over the summer before the fall type then.
So...
Oh, and then, and then with community development, I just want to add this because I, because I deal with a lot of the angry phone calls. We have a chicken and egg game going on here, and that is that development's picking up, which is awesome. We're growing our tax base, we're growing homes and so forth. The dark side about is when it picks up like that, people are expecting things in a timely manner. We haven't been able to assist with a plan review, but they don't have building inspectors at this point, it's mainly plan review. And things are to a point where it's really, really irritating our development community, and a couple of them have said that if it gets to, if it continues this way, that they'd much rather pay to go to Walla Walla or somewhere else and just get it done at some point than to beway them. So, the idea there is to really add someone at the front window for community development because we have folks that have basic questions about building permits, inspections, and they want to talk to someone at the front window, but we're limited staff, they're dealing with phone calls with other clients, and then there's no one there, and the finance department tries the best that they can to answer, but they aren't community development, and it's just really irking a lot of our customers. We try to put them we can on the website and so forth, but there is the questions and so forth, and stuff is really picking up, which is good, but temporarily bad, so, yeah.
You probably know more about this than I do, but I remember reading a report 20 years ago, and I don't know if it's still true, but I assume it's maybe worse. That is this idea that development kind of is a solution for cities. The study, the governmental study showed that for every dollar that you gain in taxes and other revenues, it costs you $1.25 to provide the services.
A, a lot of that is what your residential properties and your big boxes for smaller business, for industrial and things like that, you actually get more money than you put into it. So, it's all about, I would say selective recruitment of developers if you will. And we, we are exploring some other avenues to, to increase some revenue on that side, but it's very limited because we have to be competitive. I would agree with, with you on some types of development, I have heard that.
I think everything except industrial.
Yeah.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I was watching something on, it was a special on Detroit when the auto industry collapsed and they, and actually, let me back up, it was Pittsburgh, it was the sixth largest city in the United States and now it was the 60th, but when they lost the people, you know, yeah, all the services collapsed.
Yeah.
So, there was, yeah, obviously there's not a, less people isn't correlated to more money.
So, as far as staff goes, that's kind of where we're at. And then if we talk about the equipment side of things, really, the equipment that our guys are, are driving out there when they're mobilized to like the wildland fires and such is, it's unreliable, it's dangerous, there's, they really, if they're going to keep doing that, providing that, then they need something different to be doing it with. And mobilization has been, the revenues from that have been growing over the last three or four years, especially to where we've, actually haven't budgeted it as a, as a consistent revenue source until this 2018 budget, but we feel like it's actually a dependable revenue source at this point. So, we actually do have $45,000 in the budget in mobilization revenue. But in order to do that, they need to have at least one piece of updated equipment.
And I would just add something too with the, with the mobilization, besides the revenue, that is a tool to keep the volunteers, because yes, they do want to provide a service where they're living and so forth, but folks who do get into that like to deal with the bigger fires that are more interested to deal with. And while I was in Colfax, we made the idea to pull away from doing that, and then we lost a bunch of volunteers. So, I think it's important to note that as well, it's basically a retention tool and recruitment for folks who are interested in fires.
One of our, one of our trucks actually had a steering failure this year, and they were able to stop prior to going over a cliff, but they, if they'd not been able to stop, they weren't able to steer.
So, does this mobilization revenue actually pay for the equipment?
Over, over time, it'll pay for the equipment.
Or does it actually more of a drain on our system to, to buy more equipment so that they can become more mobile?
I mean, here's the thing, over time, in my opinion, pays for itself. In the first year, are you going to recruit immediately? No. Within two years, yes. And I view as a retention tool, keep the volunteers, because otherwise you're in a situation where you'll lose volunteers, and then you're left with a couple of options that'll end up costing even more money, so...
This actually will, will amortize out on paying for the, the equipment. We're looking for $100,000 worth of, a used wildland fire vehicle. So, three, three years, that should take...
Let me put a caveat in there, if it rains all summer long, it will not make any money. Fires are weather-related, so.
If it rains all spring and then it's dry all summer, it'll make a lot.
It has that potential.
So, the second item for discussion is to implement a tax on our water and wastewater utilities. This would be applied to both our water and wastewater utilities, but also the irrigation districts that service homes that are within our city limits. So, we wouldn't just be putting the tax on our services, it would also be actually gaining some revenue from those service, service providers who actually are providing service to our, really, our customer base, so...
Can you split that, or does it have to be both?
What do you mean?
Irrigation and CP, and, and city utilities?
I think it would have to be a flat, I mean, it's on the utility, not on the provider, so it would need to be on the water utility for everyone.
You can't, you can't say, if you, if you buy from us, you don't have to pay this tax.
Yeah.
They don't let you do that.
Well, some of those things are written in our agreements, aren't they?
For, for Green Tank and District 14 agreements, I found there's, there's nothing that says that you shall not like put the utility tax on us, so I found no language as to that.
And it doesn't have to be approved by the districts?
No. No, because we're a municipality and they're junior districts, so...
So, Mike, this is new?
That, this would, this would be new, but you'll see in the table, the cities that are co-opting, and there's a lot more, that was just a quick, quick notes look into it. As I said initially, I, I just assumed, do you know what they say when you assume, that we were doing water and wastewater just because a lot of places do do that, so I was looking at places better, maybe revenue sources that are more common, and I saw that, I was like, wow, that's an option.
So, this may be an educated question, but Wall, City of Walla Walla?
Yeah.
They do?
They do.
There's a very nice table.
You'll see the table.
Because, okay.
So, basically, the, the estimates that I project for what the tax would generate on just the college police utilities and green tank would actually fill our budget gap. I can't really estimate District 14 because I don't know how many of their customers are within our city limits versus how many aren't, so I, I, without a lot of work, I can't just quickly make an estimate. a lot of work, I can't just quickly make an estimate on that, but...
Uh, I hate to ask this question, but, uh, could you temp- give me a little bit of background on how, so we're proposing a tax on both college place utilities and irrigation districts. So currently we tax college place utilities, but not the irrigation districts? Is that's, no?
We don't tax any water or wastewater utilities at all right now. We, we tax cable, electricity, gas, telephone. We tax every other utility except for water and wastewater, including solid waste.
Yeah.
We tax solid waste.
Okay.
Well, the question I have, when we did the increase on the water rates, um, I remember there was a comparison between us and Wall Wall and we were significantly l- lower than they were, but were, were they higher because of the tax?
The tax was not in their number.
Okay.
So here's a, a table that shows kind of my calculations of what, what this would generate in the first year at least. Um, these are our proposed amounts that we will be charging next year, our revenues we will be earning on our water and wastewater charges. So when I apply, um, I applied a six percent tax because that's the same tax we have on all of our other utilities. So I thought I'll just start there. Um, so a six percent tax on just our revenues is about two hundred and eighty thousand. Oops, I have a typo there. I'm sorry. Um, Green Tank, their revenues, this is the closest I could come to estimating what their revenues are. Um, their annual report, they're so small that I couldn't even really get numbers off their annual report because they don't actually file one. So they file a form that says their revenues vary between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and that's all it says. So, um, so I just picked a middle number there and the tax on their sales would be about seventy-five hundred. So if you put those together, we're at about two eighty-seven.
And so that doesn't include the irrigation?
Doesn't include the irrigation district, fourteen. Um, so here I checked around with some neighboring and comparable cities and, I mean, I actually didn't find any other city with, with a rate as low as six percent.
What is, what's the closest? Is Pasco the closest?
Pasco was the next closest that I could find at eight and a half.
A quick question. Uh, has the increase on the water, has it been implemented? What was the date on that?
Started this year, didn't it? Wasn't?
It started January first of two thousand seventeen.
If, when we, okay.
Yeah, and we did a three-year phase in, so we'll have another one, a smaller one this January first coming up.
No, 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 no. I'm just, yeah, my, my point is when I have neighbors go over and yell at me because their water bill's higher. I just wanted to know what the time, you know, was there in fact on a rate increase or just mad, you know? Yeah, okay.
So they, so there's no limit by the state on the amount of percentage you can charge on this tax, but there is on all the other utilities?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it's a weird.
I guess it's your own utilities, so what can they say?
Yeah, it, it's a weird twist. And as I said, I just made the assumption having come from Colfax and looking at, we had utility taxes that we were charging there, but then when I dug in, when I was trying to see if there's any stones on turn.
So this is actually a really interesting gauge because you can look at this immediately, know what cities are having the biggest problems.
Financially?
Financially.
Yeah.
Or who runs their own water district?
Yeah, is there a limit?
On wa- on water and sewer?
On tax?
And that, and that, no percentage wise, no.
And there's no like, um, if, if we were to agree to a six percent this year, we, we're not locked or limited to like a one percent change next year?
No, that's a crazy thing.
You could double it next year. Not that you would, but I mean, it, yeah, there's no, there are no rules about it other than you can have one.
Yeah, that's a crazy thing. Like with solid waste and other utilities, there's specific requirements behind this.
So were you able to find anything, like has this been talked about before by council or just, just never came?
I think it has because I was going through some old reports that Bob Zeilfelder had done before I was here and he had a couple of reports on proposed revenues and, um, different ways the city could make money and this was included in there and I don't know why it never went anywhere, but...
Well, it's interesting because I know Kennewick has, um, most people water their lawns in Kennewick with irrigation district water.
Yeah.
So a lot of that revenue is coming from tax on a different source.
The U D?
They have a, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about Toponis, but they're...
They need a new fire program.
No.
Mr. Dickerson.
So Mike, let's talk, uh, there's so many ways to balance the budget.
Yeah.
And so let's talk administrative service fees because I've been, had experience with cities that, small cities, you know, that I felt that the administrative service fee for the water and sewer was rob, like highway robbery. You know, some of the, some of these little towns, thirty-five hundred were charging up to four hundred thousand dollars. So I called the auditor and asked him what the rule was. He says, "All I can tell you is that the, the, whack say a reasonable fee."
Yeah.
He says nineteen percent is probably unreasonable. So, so what, what can we do to, it's the same kind of thing. You're, you're charging the water and sewer department to do their, their administrative work and are we doing that and how much are we charging them right now?
That, well, I mean, as far as, as far as administrative work for finance, do you want to go into cost allocations? That, is that the question you're wondering like what?
Well, yeah, because it's kind of the same thing. If you're gonna charge a utility tax on that for CE, you know, it's, it's the same kind, same thing as that inter-fund transfer of administrative service fee for the, for the utilities, the, the water and sewer, you know? You can, you can rake four hundred thousand dollars a year off of them if you want to.
You would have a fund that would be over, overfunded that would offset than the overall expense.
Yeah, the, as I understand it, the water and sewer utilities pay for themselves.
Yeah.
And whatever administrative services that the city provides, they, the water utilities pay for.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you can't use it as an offset.
Yeah, this is a tax, so this would not go to the utilities.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It would go to our general fund.
Well, both, both, both revenues go to CE.
No, 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 if, well, yes. No, because Sarah can only charge the actual cost of the administrative services to the utilities. If, if we try and charge the utilities for, to offset current expense, we'll get a finding from the auditor.
Yeah, we'll get a finding.
That's not allowed.
And that's why when you look at the positions, there's actually the cost allocation models where there's certain percentage between like CE and water and sewer, for instance, and all of that, because it isn't like you can be doing inter-fund transfers back out of the water and sewer into current expense because you have a utility and then, you know, I mean...
It's a fact if you don't realize, whether you realize or not, cities use that method to balance their budget, their CE budget.
Well, I, I...
They charge a huge percent or a small percent, depending on how much they need.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would agree with you that there, that I have seen cities, especially where I came from in Ill- in Illinois that does that. However, you end up hitting a brick wall, major, big time when you do.
And that's why I called the auditor to find out what the rule is. He says, "All the rule is, is that a reasonable fee," he said, "Nineteen percent that you're charging in your city is probably unreasonable," but some of the council needs to look at.
Here's the thing, like the last few years since I've been here and before, in our audit, we, this has been scrutinized and in the past, we have not actually had a cost allocation plan that specifies why and how we are allocating expense to our utilities. I have implemented that now because year after year after year, we've had an, an exit comment about it and they've been threatening to make it a management comment. So I've worked really hard the last couple of years to actually have documentable cost drivers that I can substantiate with data, whether it's time studies or statistics or whatever, that I actually use to allocate payroll, I mean, costs that we allocate to the utilities. It's very, very cut and dried. It, there's not, mm, I think twenty-five percent's gonna go over there. We don't do that anymore because we can't. We'll get in trouble for it.
How much total revenue do we get from that? The CE charge?
Well, we don't actually charge the funds. We directly allocate. So like my payroll allocation gets split five different places.
Yeah, and how much does that all amount to? Maybe?
Uh, I couldn't tell you after the topic.
I mean, is it like a couple hundred thousand or fifty thousand or four hundred thousand? That it would equivalent amount to for doing their work?
I would really need to look at some reports to be able to do that.
But you can't use that mu- you can't use that money to offset police, fire, public works, community development. It's gotta be directly attributable to the services provided.
The only way that the utilities can in some indirect way contribute to supporting our public safety services is by putting a tax on them that gets deposited into current expense.
So your allocation is really just administrative services, the cost? So you're talking about HR, U?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
So when we find, in another city, when we finally got that service fee from nineteen percent down to about ten percent or less, the public works was relieved because now they had more money they could spend because we weren't taking it from them to put into CE. And that's the way it works.
They had more money to purchase other things and to...
Well, I can, I can... Yeah, but that, that's exactly what she's, what she's saying.
It's costal.
It's, it's, it's cost allocated. So, so any of the, any of the funds that get cost allocated only pay for the services provided.
And obviously, as you know, cities have different formulas they use.
Well, that's what she's saying. In the past, if you just hit a straight fifteen percent, you could see where there could be a fund that would be greatly over or under a, but now that you're doing, but now that you're doing a, a reasonable allocation, it should manage.
And I don't know if they were just using a percentage fee, but that's what the percentage amounted to.
Yeah, she said that they were, you know, like a twenty-five percent or something.
Well, and I mean, the other thing, we have to be really strict in our cost allocation models because I, I'll speak like with the Colfax example and then compare to here. When you're a smaller city, they'll maybe look at your books every three years and yeah, then you can arbitrarily pick a percentage and ride that wave. But our city, uh, and last year, we got the notice of that because of the money in our budget, they look at our books every year and they scrutinize that stuff. So it has to be well documented what our cost allocation is.
So there's, there's really very, very little fudge factor in there or manipulable, manipulatable dollars in there to, there's really, it's really not there anymore.
So the six percent, maybe you have this, um, that would affect, um, if I'm thinking right here, so an average, what, what would be the average impact on a?
Let me, let me take, my, my, my total bill last month was ninety-one dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
That would add approximately five dollars to my ninety-one water suit.
Yeah, sounds right, yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's paying for your public safety. So the public safety is, you know what I mean?
That was the last, that was the last of the irrigation.
Here's another one. Here's another idea. We're, we're trying to find a solution for kind of a three-year catch-up here and, and so...
No, no, we're fighting, we're trying to find a long-term solution to match recurring expenses with recurring income.
Yeah, because I mean, keep in mind, be- beyond the whole equip- equipment replacement issue we're going over, there are other issues with both getting the appropriate number of police officers and basically keeping ourselves afloat because the past practice, when you look at the books here pretty much with grants, with street projects and everything else, was you have a position, someone retires or leaves or what have you, and then let it be vacant and then that money within that specific fund could, could basically be used to keep the lights on. Thing is, I mean, it isn't like we're flush with staff here. So, uh, yeah, we have the catch-up with equipment replacement, but I think as you saw with the strategic planning surveys and the other stuff, there, I mean, one of the goals in there and what, what the surveys indicated was optimal operations for police and fire, at least from the evidence, the, I saw when we went through that exercise, it looked like people expected the police and fire services and there is a certain expectation. Unfortunately, in the olden days, you could find private sector, all sorts of grants to pay for that stuff, but unfortunately, uh, to qualify for a Department of Justice grant and other things like that, we'd have to have our murder rate go up and stuff like that and no, and no one wants that. Now they need to harder get that money. So that's a problem. I mean, you're, unfortunately, as the times are progressing, uh, really unless you're, you're troubled by things, you're, you're really out funding on your own except for inference.
You know, Mike, one, one of the things though, it's, it's hard to draw, in a citizen's mind, it's difficult to draw a dotted line between more police officers and an increase in my water bill, you know what I'm saying? And that's, and you could, and you could make that argument and you could actually explain that, uh, but you'd almost have to go through this presentation, you know, to, um, and it is fine. The only, the only thing, you know, this is, this is interesting and this is neat. Ho- hopefully though, we don't go here every time we have an issue. And, and, and I think the other thing is of course, economic development, um, hopefully can help offset this in the future years, uh, so we don't have to keep going back there.
Um, so I have a million thoughts on this, but I would like to ask, can we kind of finish the whole presentation before we start? I mean, I'm tied with questions about how it works, but to, I feel like we're starting to
Get back there.
Turn around and I wanna...
Yep.
I think it was important for us to get a overall picture of what we're trying to do here. For me, it was. I mean, we're not looking for a temporary gap field here. We're looking for a, for a steady revenue source.
And this is for the future.
Regardless of the...
And this is part of the other two we didn't like.
Regardless of the unusual expenditures that put us in back
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah, but yeah, there was a, there was a long-term issue here and we're just trying to look at ways to fix it. And in this, in this state compared to others, there's very limited options. This is the lowest hanging fruit.
Okay, so I think this next slide, yeah, this has the wastewater comparison. So again, um, it's funny, Othello's wastewater rate is a lot higher than their, I think their water rate was like ten percent. Um, but...
But it looks like most of them, their water and wastewater is the same.
They're pretty close. They're not necessarily exact, but they're within a, a percentage or two usually, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, and this was, there was only one comparable city I c- I looked at that I couldn't find for sure. I just couldn't find for sure if they had a utility tax or not. It seemed like they did, but I could never actually find it in their code exactly, and that was Clarkston.
Yeah, I did get a response from Cheney though, cause today, cause I was looking for theirs and, uh, utility taxes on water and wastewater, Cheney's eleven percent, so...
So, so is it possible that if you hadn't charted up there that said Seela, Grandview, Wapato, Sunnyside and so forth, you'd have one that said zero for, for just as many cities?
That's what I was gonna say is that the only one that I couldn't actually find a rate for was Clarkston, but I saw verbiage that sounded like they did have one. So I didn't find any that just flat, I could tell didn't have one at all.
Didn't have any.
Like we are the only city that I could find.
And to me, and I may be wrong, the only comparison that really matters is Wall Walla.
Yeah.
And maybe Kennewick, but it's, it's Wall Walla. I mean, if you want to move to Grandview.
And I think their water was what? Yeah, thirteen.
Yeah.
Thirteen and thirteen. So we're, we're asking, we're proposing less than half.
I mean, if you look, if you look at those cities, the, i- in, in the area, the real comparable with this is West Richland.
Yeah.
Uh, it, yeah, a, a bedroom community with limited, with limited economic base.
And the only one of these cities actually that, um, the AWC comparable cities calculator that they just came out with actually said was a com- like according to all of their statistics was Othello. Um, and Othello's is substantially higher, so...
We did much work.
I mean, it's correct to assume that these cities have had these taxes for a while.
Yeah, they have. Yeah. Yeah, and like I, I'm here at Clarkston.
Like they're not just adding them last year.
No, and they probably don't have, they probably have higher property tax. They probably don't, I mean, obviously they don't have the churches and the schools.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and this one, like I said, I couldn't find a water rate for Clarkston, but I was able to find a sewer rate for them. So I don't, I'm not sure, but I didn't really find anyone else. I didn't find anyone else that didn't have any. So that's, that's kind of the research I did, what I found. That... That to me is, like Mike just said, the lowest hanging fruit. It's pretty status quo to have that. I mean, it's very status quo. We don't have it. We're proposing a much lower rate than most places. So it's something to consider. The last of the three options that we kind of came up with was to exercise the rights of the Transportation Benefit District and, and do the tab tax. Unfortunately, it's not sufficient to fill the gap that we feel like we need to fill or that we currently have. An annual amount would only be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for our city. And in the first year, it would only be about ninety thousand because we would only get three quarters of the year in the first year. So it's a, it's a, it's still a viable source of revenue to consider for the future, maybe for some other reasons. But it, it would not actually fix this problem that we have right now.
Well, my question was, if we're looking at a hole in the CE budget, how much do we put into the street fund? Because only that much could we replace with this anyway.
We put, I think it's four hundred and thirty thousand is the transfer for next year.
So it's well above that?
Yeah.
I think I brought it once before. Oh, go ahead.
And this would be for a twenty dollar increase in the tab?
I'd, I'd spoken with that county commissioner by Palmeroy, and they had talked about a twenty dollar tab. And everyone over there had lost their minds when that showed up on their bill. Whereas they, I think they went through and they did the sales tax increase, and there was almost no... And, and once again, what that affected were the people who were driving through town that were buying things and whatnot. But there was something that just set everyone off when it was like tab increase.
Well, and I mean, I, I would just like to add something. When I, when, originally, when I saw the utility tax on the spreadsheet, I thought we were charging a utility tax. Your options left at that point, frankly, is a Transportation Benefit District or an amusement tax, or, or a lot of marijuana places in a city, for instance. But when, but, but when you look at the fact that we are like one of the only cities, at least I can find so far, it's not charging a utility tax. With a Transportation Benefit District, a person can make it, can make an argument, there are cities that don't charge. I can, I can name a few. But with this utility tax thing, that's just common, frankly. And it's, it's going to take some real homework to find one that doesn't charge it.
One thought here is that it seems like we're kind of leaning towards the utility tax as kind of like, this will be the solution. Like, kind of focus on one. Is that kind of the way we're leaning here? Because an alternative thought here is, I'm thinking is that like, you know, could we do a combination here? Could we do like a almost unobservable increase to the tab? Like, could we do like a two fifty or five dollar tab increase? That would be difficult to raise too much ruckus about, while maybe trying to take off the, I mean, you know, six percent, six percent. You know, for a family that's really struggling and they're budgeting and they're pinching pennies here, and I just worry about hitting them too hard, you know? And it seems reasonable, based on what you said, to charge this. But I don't want to like throw it in there too intensely. So I'm thinking like, can we do a little bit of a combination of, of several of these options? Could we intend to hire a staff member rather at the beginning of next year? Could we do it like at the end of summer to just save a little bit on, no?
At the, at the rate, at the rate that we're at with police, and we could turn over to Troy at this time, and here's a later on that. But we're having a problem retaining the people we have right now. And there is a sunk cost of training in this boat. There's a lot of sunk costs with police departments.
And instructions.
And then with community development, we are at the cusp of some cool stuff right now. And either we catch the wave and we ride it and we get that money, or we're gonna kiss it, sayonara, and walla walla. And everyone else is going to get the money and we'll be left with no ones.
Okay. So, so take that one off the table, okay? You, you gotta get great point there. But could we do a combination here of a small, very relatively small increase to, for a tab tax or a sales intact, a sales increase in tax with maybe a slightly small six percent increase? Just kind of take the edge off that.
I, I mean, the answer is, the answer is we probably could. The reason, the reason we were looking out toward the utility taxes is when we look at everyone who's charging it and what they're charging. And, and to Lauren, to Lauren's point, with the Transportation Benefit District, even though for me it's hard to comprehend why, because a lot of places are way more than that, and you don't really get a say in it. There, it seems like there's an emotional issue with that. Whereas with this utility tax, everyone is doing it, frankly, and, 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 and they're charging, and they're charging a bit more. And the proposals keep that in line with what we were doing with other utilities. So if they have this...
Well, if you do...
Are we, are we finished on thinking of ideas now?
Um...
I have a comment.
I have some ideas.
Two dollars and fifty cents, you're going to generate about fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so instead of six percent, you're gonna have a five point nine percent increase on the count.
Yeah. Okay. So I think this is my last one. Let me make sure. Yep. Okay. So in summary, we, as staff, we recommend adopting the utility tax, just because it seems like the most common. It's a low amount compared to other cities. It would fund the, the gap. And it was truly, it was a coincidence when I calculated this out, that it came out to like almost the exact amount. Like, I did not plan that, guys. Seriously.
I don't know, you're pretty smart.
It's the way it always is.
Ms. Elby, you had a comment?
Well, actually, I have a couple of comments. One, I really appreciate that we're working really hard to cover current expenses with current revenue, because since we do have a fund balance, it would be tempting to grab that.
Yeah.
However, having said that, I do, I have three things that I think it would be fair to take out of the fund balance. And those are the second payment of the World War II memorial, all of the payments of the pool. I mean, I wouldn't do them all next year, but I think we should set that aside. And...
The library? Oh, no.
Well, and this is controversial. But what I would say is, you know, we're thinking the time to have the library on the... People talk to me a lot about the library. And the time that it's what, two years out that we would want to have it on the ballot?
That would be two thousand nineteen.
Yeah. So if we said, we're, we're funding this program for two years out of the fund balance, and every time we talk about the program, we say, it will end in two thousand nineteen, I think that makes it a whole lot stronger to say, we need an ongoing balance, an ongoing revenue source for library.
So you're saying, you're saying make the library card funding be non-recurring expense then? Just saying, because it has an end date to it?
Yes.
The other two are already coming out of fund balance. They're not, they are not...
They're not included in the budget. Okay. Then my other thought, which is a little different than what you proposed, is I would like to see how much we would have to raise the utility tax to add two police officers instead of one.
Add, add another hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I don't know what percentage that is, because...
About three.
Three percent, yeah. If six is two seventy-five.
Well, but the, that hole was bigger than just a police officer, I thought.
No, no, no. A six percent increase, guys, two eighty.
The two, two eighty-six.
So another three, three percent would...
Which still gives us way lower, seven percent lower than Walla Walla. We're still, we would be slightly above, what, Richland maybe?
Yeah.
So if we did like a ten?
So that four million, six fifty-six.
Yeah. So because I'm really concerned about our police, frankly. So I would like to see those as options that we could have for discussion.
The other talking point that we should probably bring up is, in our original version of the budget, what we wanted to be able to bring you guys was to provide some, like, to go out and purchase some used vehicles for our police officers, to have enough vehicles in the fleet that they could each have a car to take home with them. It, it would enhance efficiency and I think uplift the morale as well, and...
Well, beyond the uplift of the morale, the, what, what we were looking at with the take-home vehicles, because this was something we used in Colfax to minimize hiring extra people, is that when you have a fleet of cars, folks are having to check it out. There's, that, there's inherent downtime when you do that, where if a car is assigned to a person when they're in shift, guess what? They're out like immediately. So that was initially what we were trying to do, but the gap.
Well, and I would, I would defer to, you know, staff and, and chief on what's the highest priority.
Whether another officer or the vehicles.
Maybe it's vehicles first, and then another officer or something like that. But, but I would not be at all uncomfortable with having an option of around ten percent with the extra going to the police. And I think, although it's not a direct, I don't think we'd have to show them all this to talk about that to people. I think we could say, you know, everywhere else charges a tax on this. And this way, everyone in Walla Walla, whether they're connected to the sewer or the wa, city sewer and water or not, not everybody in Walla Walla, everybody in College Place.
Well, I would love for Walla Walla to pay for it.
Everybody in College Place is gonna pay for this. And I think it's a legitimate...
I just have a super quick question. How many cars would we need for years? Just four? Okay.
Well, yeah. If we want to keep our reserve running, we'd need five.
Five, okay. That's all. Go. All right.
Mr. Peterson.
Let's go. Lauren first.
No, to, to your point, and we spoke earlier about what, what does a city give back to the community, you know? And, and part of that, the, the library is really neat. That's something that we're giving back to the community. The pool is really neat. That's something that, that, it's a benefit that we're giving. And of course, fire and police protection, you know? And those are visible. Those, those are, you know, it, it, you know, it, it's the stuff that you see that, yeah, is very apparent.
And I... Well, no, Mr. Cleveland.
I just want to say, you know, I think, you know, even ten percent would be a reasonable endpoint for this tax. And I'm not opposed to the tax. I just would be concerned about six percent all at once for people who, say, are on a fixed income. I just would like to see either just take a little bit of that edge off somehow, or phase it in, just so we aren't hitting people so intensely that really are at the edge.
Do you have totals of what the utility bills are for those same cities that you showed on the chart? So, so if it's, you know, if it's, I mean...
I think I have several of them in other presentations that I did when we were talking about our rates, but I don't have them...
Even at six percent, would we, would our total bill be substantially lesser or substantially more than these other cities?
Mine was almost two hundred last month.
Yeah, it would, we would still be quite a bit lower than Walla Walla, because I know that after implementing our, like, five years of increases, we were still gonna be lower than what they are right now. So...
You know, this, this tax is interesting, because when I was talking to Mike the other day, the other, the first thing that came to my mind was the fact that, you know, I was like, I didn't know about this. But I knew that there was still gap between what we're charging for water and a Walla Walla is, it was significant. And so...
And, and trust me, Walla Walla's water bills are going to go up. They're, they're going to be paying for their, their new treatment system, and they're going to find that the income from their water billing is not going to be adequate to cover the cost of operations for their system. Ms. Elby.
Um, are we at the max for the other utilities, like cable and telephone and all that stuff?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it's limited to...
I think we are.
Yeah.
The only one that wasn't, was I think, was telephone. Anyway, a few years after I got on the council, we realized that we didn't have a tax on a utility. And so Pat suggested we bring it up to match the other ones. So we did.
Yeah, because if we're not, that would be pretty painfully, you know? I never yell at the city when I get my telephone bill.
You gonna tax my HBO?
Absolutely. If I don't have HBO, it's tax your Netflix.
Invest in indoor, outdoor antenna, Lauren.
Also, Melody, I just did a quick calculation, and it would be between eight and nine percent would be the amount to fund another officer.
So I, I guess what I would say as far as feedback is, I would like to see sort of a range of proposals on the utility. And I don't want to put too much work on you guys, but, you know, what would it be to fit? What would be the implication if we did some sort of phase in, or is there an option to, you know, help out with low income or something?
You know, the difficulty with our low income is we don't get many people taking opportunities to use it.
What do you mean?
We are, we have a program to help people with the utility bills.
And they're not taking it.
They don't take advantage of it.
You put it in your newsletter?
Yeah.
Yeah, social media too.
Well, but it's, yeah, it's...
Mike, what's your, what's your timing on the whole Walla Walla University, that whole scenario of funding our officers? Is that like a year off or, and it may not even happen, right?
I would say at the soonest it would be when we begin to fall in next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was trying, I was trying to encourage it.
We're looking at a couple of options. A, a university parking district, where you, if you're not a resident in the area, you end up having to have a parking sticker to park on the streets. Some other things to try and generate income in addition to asking the university to, to help support the kinds of, I don't know, the chief spent, what, a whole day with, with the tabletop exercise on an active shooter?
We spent quite a good time working on a tabletop. I'm gonna be working with the university to help them with their, their active shooter response. And they've done a lot of work, and they're, they're making effort. And Deb Tilstra, I'm very impressed with him, and he's really moving forward. And so I'm gonna be helping to train some staff. And yeah, we're doing some good things. We're actually, we have an MOU with them. We're actually putting it to action. So we're making some really good progress. We're fostering some new resources, turning up, so.
Mr. Peterson. I have kind of a thought here. I've listened to everything now, and I think I understand now what you're trying to do. And so regardless of our unusual expenditures that we had this last year, you're looking for a stable resource of revenue. And I think you're right on with your six percent for the water, utility, and the utility taxes for water and sewer. I, I used to talk to Pat about stuff like this privately, and he, even in council meetings, we discussed the tab tax and so forth. And I was kind of all for it because, but I didn't realize that we could make up our difference on the utility tax, that we didn't talk about it. And I was kind of all for it because I says, well, who knows? No, you know, but, you know, Lauren's story of Palmeroy and stuff like that, you know? It's, it's one of those things where you don't want to be this, the only city that does it. Then you don't want to be the only city as a utility tax that doesn't do it. And so the reasonable thing here is, is to close this gap that we're looking at, get our employees up to where we can, and have a reasonable tax on our utilities so that people don't move away or move here because of little things like that. It's when things generally collectively get too much that people start moving away. It's not just because the utility tax is going to be ninety dollars or seventy dollars, and they're used to twenty-four over here, something like that. That's not what makes the difference in where people live.
You know, what we're talking about is very defensible. I mean, you bring somebody in, and you guys can keep, prepare. I mean, I don't know, you don't want to make it public, but okay, this is what we're doing. This is what everyone else is doing as far as water rates. This is what we're doing, including the tax, and this is where it falls. And so, and you're exactly right. If I'm, if I'm paying twenty bucks a month, now I gotta pay fifty, that gets my attention, even though it'd cost me seventy bucks and more, you know, for the same service. But yeah. I guess what I'm saying, I can sleep at night.
Ms. Elby?
I tend to agree with Melody, that if we could see numbers on going higher, get him a second. Because I think one is great. That's still going to be really, really minimal for him. Troy, I mean, you know?
For all of us.
And it still doesn't, it doesn't sound like that's going to solve. I mean, obviously, cars are another issue, but I don't know.
I think eight percent would cover not a second option, instead of six percent.
Because I think that that's really important, just because it's more expensive, obviously, to have turnover, have any of the, want the current officers leave and then spend more money getting someone else, and the time that that takes. And then that's more pressure on everyone.
Yeah, it's, Troy, the lead time to get an officer really on the streets eight months?
Yeah, absolutely. Or, or one, because you have the recruiting period, you have the civil service period, and then you try to get into academy. We didn't get the first academy October thirty-first. Now we're being bumped to November twenty-seventh. It's a very difficult process. And so at least, the two officers we just hired, they'll be ready to go probably at the end of June. So it wasn't that far out. And here's the deal. Bill Kelly's staying on until April just to help cover our shortfall. And just to call on the... And just to call the individual, he's really bailing us out. And we've got, we do have a temporary employee, Gary Bolster, who's been helping us out. He's been filling Diaz's spot while he's away. We would be, we'd be in big trouble if we didn't have him. We, we are, we have to backfill that overtime just to cover shifts to cover seven days a week coverage. So we're, we're spending a lot of overtime. And Lauren, you asked me about that. We're looking at this stage. But we have been getting grants to back, to repay the city for our overtime, um, which has been very helpful. And look, let me just talk about, you know, the two off, thank you, two officers is great. I asked for in our budget. Um, you know, two officers is really just banding. And then Roger Mayman told me he wants to retire. He's gonna have hip surgery in December and, and he is looking, he's planning, he can retire right now if he wanted to. So we, the attrition here is gonna be, I have to stay ahead of the curve here. I'm looking strategically, maybe probably five years down the road, what we need to do. So really just one or two officers would be a banding. Um, I would need four more officers just to cover seven days a week. So I'm asking for those positions because we're grossly, grossly understaffed. And I need, frankly, I need an assistant. I need, I need a captain or a lieutenant because administratively, I'm having a hard time keeping up with best practices. And that's one of the reasons why our audit was pretty intense because we have fallen behind. And they're all manpower related issues. And Lauren, you had a comment and I have one more comment to make.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're in this predicament, aren't we, where we're having to hire junior police officers? Because we're not able to get an officer with 10 years of experience that can walk in the door and just say, put me in a car.
Financially, we're not competitive to, to, to get a lot of officers in here. And here, and that's one of the reasons why we're going after the vehicles because we are grossly underpaid compared to Walla Walla and the sheriff's office. It's for compensation packages. So we thought, well, maybe we can entice these guys, get them here with a vehicle. Because, you know, for $7,000, we can get used vehicles from the state and we can give these guys state home cars. It not only does it save us maintenance costs, but it also saves us time every day. So you have, it's kind of a lean thing. Um, so there's a lot of advantages to it. And there's a lot of safety reasons behind it. I'm not gonna get into all the details. But to come to PD, if you're interested, to come to PD to study, uh, take home vehicles. It's online. You can download it. It's really interesting, but.
Those, those take home vehicles are marked?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You know, there's something that's so neat about that where you have a, you know, in the driveway, there's a state patrol car or a.
People love that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You'll notice that all the sheriff, all the sheriff deputies have a take home vehicle.
Yeah.
And that is a huge recruiting thing. So I did an actual research project on some of the reasons why people don't live in. And I always thought, guys can live in, well, there's two reasons usually is because of pay and leadership. Actually, leadership is number one.
Yeah.
Pay's number two. And in the, in the research I did, leadership is a big, was a big market. But the second thing, it wasn't pay, it was their safety. Guys do not wanna work by themselves. And, and we have problems here in our city. We've got the president of the Amigos living in our town and several of the members. We've got the second in charge of the 18th Street gang living in our town. And I can go on and on. We've got several drug houses here. We have the number one heroin dealer in Walla Walla County living in our town.
Can we tax that?
And you wanna know why they live here? It's because they know there's not much law enforcement presence. So, um, there's a need to increase our presence.
Yeah.
So I would kind of like to see, and it's, it's, I think our police has our biggest, most urgent need, but all of our departments are like that. It's like, we have like one person in every department. So heaven forbid somebody gets sick, you know?
Sarah, yeah. We went through that.
So I would, I would kind of like to see a projection of like 10% of what that would do for us.
Mike, the position you're adding for the, um, oh.
Community development.
Yeah. Now, I know initially there may, is, is that, I think I had asked this before. Is that somebody that could also do other duties other than that? And what I mean, I mean, I, it sounds like it's a full-time, busy job. But I look at that and I wonder if the quality of that individual, when you hire them, is that somebody? I mean, you know, I, I, you know, I mean, could that be a police officer? Could that, I'm just throwing that out there. Could that be, or is that somebody that could fill backfill in some of these other areas when somebody is sick or, or, um?
We, we tried that out in Colfax. I would advise against it because over there, we have a combination IT director, building inspector, code enforcement, animal control officer. No, it bombed a lot. Uh, but, but.
How'd you get that?
Larry's business card.
So, so I mean, we're.
Mr. Bolley, you had a comment.
I, I want to clarify just one little issue. This is not a new hire or a new position. This is a position that existed in the past and we lost. And we laid this person off. And so we have been, we're not like, we're not adding a person. This is really just backfilling a position that has been.
When was that person, when was that person laid off?
The end of 2012.
Yeah.
So it's been a while.
Yeah. And, and this, this administrative assistance, I mean, we say community development, but it's, it's gonna help out the engineering department, public works, the building department.
So it is much more than.
It is.
Yeah, it's something that's gonna be.
And, and.
This side of the building.
And our customer service. Our customer service has dropped dramatically. And we hear it almost on a daily basis when we come to the local players, like, they just can't get a hold of us. This side does not know what's going on over here. When I don't answer my phone, they assume I'm out of the building or something. Or Larry or Scott, they don't, you know, so it's really, that's really important for us to continue to improve.
None of the finance staff is underemployed.
I was just gonna ask that. Cause we talked about a deputy for another one of those backfilling positions. Are we gonna be able to fill a position there too?
On this side?
Deputy Finance Director?
Oh, no.
I'm not gonna. You, you budgeted it for this year?
No.
Oh, you didn't? I thought you did.
No. We are, um, moving to a paperless payable system now. So that should free up some of my accountant's time and hopefully help with more projects.
There's a lot of cross-training that's going on. But the.
Anyway, I was, no.
Short, short of, short of a finance director falling off the roof of a barn.
I see Lisa nodding her head. She must be one of those.
Basically, everybody on that side covers everybody. I mean, clerk, HR, finance, utility, we all cover each other because there is nobody else to do it.
It's truly a team, team effort over there.
There's one other thing I would point out with filling this community system position is it's gonna, that, that position will be trained in our bias permitting side. Um, and we'll end up freeing up Larry's time in getting permits issued. Right now, we're using the third party for all our plan reviews, which is, that's a huge revenue source for us when we get to keep that money. But when we're paying 75% of our plan reviews to a third party, that's a lot of money.
That's a good point.
That we're losing in revenue. So, um, that having a position in place will free up Larry's time to actually do those plan reviews instead of shuffling the paper around and working in bias.
Ms. Elby.
How's the timeline on all of this where we wanna see a couple of other numbers by another word?
I was just thinking about that. If we might, might need to try to have another workshop before I present, um, final budget on, at the end of the month.
You're gonna try to work it into the budget, the 2018 budget?
Yeah, we have to. We have a hole in it right now. I have to do something.
The deadline was, you already told us, but for the, but the deadline to get this wrapped up is?
Um, we have to have a budget implement or adopted by the end of December.
Okay.
We're scheduled to have a, to be adopting it the first meeting of December. It's like the 14th.
Cause we're not scheduled to have a second meeting in December.
No, I'm, I'm open to a, yeah.
I, I. So if we did another interim workshop, maybe in a week or so.
Do you have to have an ordinance amendment for that chart, that utility charge?
Yes, we would have to have an ordinance.
Can you do it at the same time as the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
But we, you know, we, we wanna make very sure that you're comfortable with that.
Well, I'm comfortable with your proposal. I think you guys are right on. And I think you've thought it through and really, your recommendation is very valuable.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
So, oh, 10, a week to 10 days for another workshop?
A week would be great.
With, with the idea of the scenario?
No, I'm, I was just talking to Herman.
I'm sorry. You were talking about, we wanted to see a scenario of 6% or 10%. Is that right? So.
Yeah, I, that's what I understand.
Well, that could be a phase in in the future too.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to make a, a little bit of a point too to show you, we aren't operating in a black box either with the whole budget process. We actually made a budget webpage for all the iterations we've been going through, including the capital improvement plan. We shared that on social media and it's on the news feed. So it has the timeline and then as you scroll down per meeting, it hyperlinks all the documents that then on the various meetings from board docs. So, uh, they, folks can go on the one page and see this process as it's carrying through.
That's really cool, you guys.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
This is open to the public? I mean, okay.
It's, um, if you go to our homepage, it's linked from the, down here. Where was it? Right here.
Something I'm, I'm wondering is that, you know, we, we wanna avoid any sort of highly visible outrage with the TAB tax. I wonder if we could sneak this under the radar with a very slow phase in, you know, something that people hardly notice. Cause you know, I mean, if we, even if we did this, the, the $5 thing, I mean, that's what, $25,000? Not, not a huge amount, but if we phased this in over a few years, could we kind of quell or avoid any sort of outrage?
You're talking about just the tabs, right? Not phasing in the 6% or?
Right, yeah, yeah. I, I think, you know, we'll probably have to go with the 6% based on what we said and what our needs are. It seems, you know, unfortunate, but reasonable. Um, but as far as like phasing.
For additional income?
The short answer to your question is yes, we could do that.
Yep.
Cause the, the up to $20 is totally at your discretion. It's up to.
Does anyone else have an opinion on that? Should we just leave that off the table or?
Well, I kind of offered my opinion, talking to, I was talking to Pat about this. I thought it was a good idea and that nobody will really give a hoot, you know, because it'll just be automatic and stuff. But I think this utility tax is a much better idea.
I'm suggesting, well, can't we do both?
Yeah, I don't think we need both. And by the time Mike gets done with this big deal, it's gonna land for us, you know? I was just gonna say that. That's gonna seem like small potatoes, you know?
Fair enough.
As far as my thoughts on it go, I think we probably could really use both. Um, and especially as we grow because, um, as new people come to town, one of the first things they always say is, man, what is with the roads here? However, so that's the pro side. People just are, I don't know what it is about tabs. And maybe it goes back to when they were $1,000 a car. But, um, people are just passionate about car tabs. And it doesn't seem to matter the number, it's the line. So, but.
Well, and they've grown over the years since they were reduced.
Yeah.
It's been, yeah.
Yeah, they found administrative ways of.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, what I would really like, and I don't know if this is possible, but is there a way that we can kind of reach out to our citizens and find out, you know, are we a Pomeroy kind of place? Are we a Buryan kind of place where we're like, yeah, whatever, you know? I mean, I really don't know.
You'll find out when you put it on the initiative.
See, I, well, it's not an initiative. It's just, it just pops up.
I mean, on the advisory ballot.
No, it doesn't go on the ballot.
I mean, like for the, like for the library district. You know, you'll find out.
But the tabs, that wouldn't, it wouldn't go through that process.
It's, it's the tabs.
Not up to $20.
Not, yeah, the tax would, but the tabs don't.
Right.
And so that's why, and I, I'm like, I'd kind of like to, you know, not just light it on fire and hope for the best.
Well, you know, right, right now, right now, we have a group of all Walla University students asking a variety of questions. And I think, I think we'll continue to poll and ask questions over time. And that, the, the, you know, we, this time we focused on library and streets and, and parks and those kinds of things. And since my neighbor does the marketing research class, I'm sure we can convince them to, to continue to do those kinds of things, uh, over a period of time. And we honestly, you know, we honestly don't know what we don't know about opinion. I, I know that we, I know that we get squeaky wheels.
Yeah.
But, but I'm un, I'm uncertain whether or not there's a lot of squeaky wheels or whether or not we've just got a few people who are really vocal. I mean.
There's always gonna be squeaky wheels and nimby's, you know? And, and generally people like what we're doing. They approve of the general progress we're making for the city. And it's indicated by running unopposed.
Yeah.
And, and on your ballot. Because nobody's, nobody's, and when, and there's been times when it hasn't been like this. And when people are really interested or against something that's happening, there's three or four people running on the ballot against you. They'll, they'll let you know when they don't like what you're doing.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I, I get no negative feedback.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson.
Is there anything that's falling off the repayment schedule that would reduce? Is there a bond issue or anything in the near future? I know we talked about, there's something falling off on the wastewater, wasn't it? Or, um?
Wastewater is in the next couple of years. In two or three years, we're done with.
Is there anything else in the next?
Oh, you're gonna see, you're gonna see.
Look at the reverse.
A buck and a half drop per thousand in your property taxes in 2019.
You're talking about stuff like paying off the fire, fire building?
So, so it's, so it's not, so it's not gonna be directly related to the city.
20-year payment came to.
But, but you're gonna see a drop off in property taxes, which should make people really happy. It's all associated with, 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 with school financing. We'll see how well that goes.
Oh, okay.
With the, with, you know.
Refin it.
With the, with the McCleary, with the try and resolving the McCleary decision, our property taxes are gonna drop.
That raises another question. Um, as far as police officers, don't we have another one coming on that's shared with the school district?
He's already on.
Already on. So that one's already on. That's accounted for.
To replace that position.
And so that's accounted for in this low number thing you're presenting.
Yeah. And I mean, he's, he's, he's pretty much full-time at the schools. Summer, he'll be freer. And, and there's a lot to gain from having, from having that, but.
You know, today there was a father who has mental health issues that is not wanted at the school, does not have a parent plan to show at the school. I mean, that was just a, a perfect example of why he needs to run. He, he was there. He engaged with that guy right away. And, and actually the fire department showed up and, uh, it was great.
When you're talking about officer safety though, out there, are they on call? Can they be pulled out of that school immediately?
Yes, and he has.
Okay. So if an officer feels uncomfortable with the situation, he can get on that horn and say, I need you now or, you know?
Yeah. Problem, problem is, is domestic violence call in the middle of the night.
True, yeah.
It's gotta be kind of 50/50.
Tire timing is everything.
Timing, timing is everything and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you haven't had the time to read the, the audit or whatever it was called of the police, it's pretty hair-raising. I recommend that you read it.
Yeah.
So back to my, my question there, there isn't like a 20-year bond or something that's dropping off here? You know, we've got some big things that we've just done, the streets and schools and whatnot.
Yeah.
But there's really the next, yeah, okay.
No.
Okay.
So things we're making payments for would be like what, um, Commercial Avenue?
Commercial Drive.
The fire building is paid off now?
Yes, it is.
The, um.
We have a payment on the new fire.
Whitman Drive.
What?
And Whitman Drive.
Um.
The contract for that.
We have some water, well, we just paid off, yes, on the first. We've closed on our revenue bonds for the water utility and we paid off the Whitman Drive bonds with that. We refunded that. So that's gone now.
Yeah, stuff like that. Anything else?
Um, we have the Cars Project Bonds payments, the Fire Engine, Commercial Drive. Those are the three that come out of current expense. The, the rest of them are all water, wastewater.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I was just curious if there were, yeah.
I don't wanna paint doom and gloom, but you realize when we drop some of these bonds off, our maintenance and operations are increasing because of failing. In other words, we're already experiencing quite a bit increase in costs over at the fire department just at the same time as we're no longer making payments on it. You know, the same thing happens to you at home, I mean.
Well, that's right. Time to replace the kitchen. Time to replace the kitchen.
Now that we've paid it off, it's time to replace it.
Yeah, replace the sink.
So are we ready to move on?
Yeah. I'm with you. I appreciate this and I really think the timing is great. Sure glad you guys are on with us.
Thank you.
I agree.
And thanks, Sarah.
I think if we just let Sarah run everything, if I need to.
I don't want to.
Make all the recommendations to the council, we'll never have these problems.
There's nothing complaints to you.
I cannot take the credit for a lot of this, so.
If you don't know it, she runs the entire city, so. So don't, that there be no confusion.
We picked up on that.
No, it's true. Between Sarah and Lisa.
And Bill.
And, well, yes.
Whoever you have to ask if you can buy something, they're the one that runs the city.
Do you want to go to the agenda?
Yeah, sorry. Click on meetings. And view agenda.
Okay. With the legislative agenda, I mean, really, this is pretty cut and dried because there's a lot of items that were not accomplished the last legislative session. Yeah, so it's.
What?
Yeah.
What did you want? Zoom? Zoom, okay.
Control plus.
I got it, I got it.
You gotta do the.
I don't know.
There you go. There you go.
It's on, it's on security.
So, so redid the form, we had a legislative agenda this year, just have quick facts about the city and then where we're located. And then really key issues are broken into several elements, economic development, infrastructure, general government, public safety and human services. General gist of it is timely passage of the capital budget, our money for wells in there, asset frankly, sustainable funding for Public Works Trust Fund, that looks like that's going to go. Hopefully it will. Maximize capital budget for programs that we need, that money's been diverted from. So stormwater, youth athletic facilities, safe routes to school. A big one that there's actually a push for, which is pretty exciting this year, is to do some economic development incentive programs. So a, a big issue in the state, and I've talked with Terry Neely's office and it turned out I was right on that, by the way. The, so a couple of years ago, they, they used to have an economic development program that was like called local revitalization financing. And it was basically tax increment finance in light, that's a really bad word in the state, but that, that's basically where if you have a bigger project come in where you can take out bonds and then if the development comes to fruition, you're making all the sales tax, the state basically rebates all the tax back to you. It's a very strong program and a lot of the, pretty much every state except Washington has some sort of tax increment finance and urban renewal. We're the only state where it's constitutionally forbidden and they did this workaround a couple of years ago in the recession, but then it just ended. In Kennewick, that whole South Ridge area, that's how that took off, that local revitalization financing. And now it's coming to a close and Kennewick's freaking out because they need it. So there's a big push to get it going. So that's on our agenda because I think that could really help with the McCurnan side over here, even with downtown over here. I mean, it really has some nice potential. Funding US twelve phase eight, the last section, which is one lane each way. Applying lean principles to lodging tax reporting requirements. Right now, we have the lodging tax on the books. It's the same as it was before we started collecting it. The only difference is we aren't hemorrhaging it to the county instead of staying here. But they want to put some money on measuring requirements that you practically have to write the novel to like get the money out of it. So there's a push to simplify it. Also updating the bid and laws so you can do electronic bids and design build methods so you can save money. And then support passage or reclaim water statute where it looks at as a resource and not wastewater because there's some language there that's problematic. General government, there's a push to continue and reform the public records laws where for larger requests, you've actually recovered greater staff time than you can right now. Right now, it's just per record. So that's important. There's also a little bit of a movement afoot to look at the property tax cap limit right now, so that's on there. Another one for general government is amend the publication requirements so that way you can publish through your city websites or press releases as opposed to newspaper because there's a pretty good sized cost to that.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. And, and, and there's actually a push right now by a lot of cities, so it looks like that has traction. Yep.
Progress.
Support, limit the amount of unfunded mandates, that's pretty natural. And then fully funding the municipal research services center because that they always try to play a game with that, saying, oh, we'll cover the.
We're the only, we're the only state that has a service like M R S C.
Yeah, it, it's a great service. I wish I would have had that in Oregon or Illinois.
And that's one of the reasons why Washington used to anyway regularly win awards for being one of the best managed states was that and our fiscal loan policy.
And they used to be just for cities and not for counties.
Yep. So for public safety and human, uh, human services, so dedicated revenue source to cities for enhancing human service programs such as affordable housing, reducing homelessness and also public safety costs, there's a movement afoot for that. As well as restore, fully funding the basic law enforcement academy. A lot of these are, are coming to fruition because we're later to the game and in talking with a lot of surrounding cities, there's a push for a lot of these, so at least it looks like there's some traction, which is why it's on here. Appropriately funding mental health services and then funding Department of Natural Resources for wildland firefighting, that goes into a lot of our, our work with our fire department. And then supporting the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Agenda, which pretty much is very similar to what you see here, it's just ours is much briefer than what they have on their flyer. The three priorities naturally is the well number two, one and two replacements. We all need water, so that's a pretty big priority. With arterial street improvements, Fourth and Academy Way and C Street, that was on the priority list last year as well. And it, and it looks like we're going to be doing good there with some T I B grants and things like that. And then the other one, but this is a moving target is we're getting our plan up is the whole wastewater plant and.
Ms. Selton?
So I have kind of a two-part related question. One is, well, I don't disagree with the reclaimed water one.
Yeah.
I'm kind of surprised to see it pop up as a key issue for us because it's probably not very likely that reclaimed water is going to make economic sense here anytime in the near future. But it seems like we would definitely be helped by supporting, trying to think of good wording for this, but supporting alternate compliance paths for things like PCBs. Because our wastewater plant, what's going to really drive up the cost is trying to comply with a water quality standard that's based on levels that you can't even measure.
Yeah.
And so looking at things like source control and things like that and saying, you know, this is, this makes so much more sense than spending the time and money to pretend to treat something that we can't even tell if we're treating it or not. So I would put that as much higher, for us, as much higher than reclaimed water.
Mr. Peterson?
Mike, there was a conversation, I can't remember which meeting, we were going to, it was us, Cheney and, no.
Holman.
Holman and Spokane. Did we ever reach out to them? I think there was some discussion of.
That was an issue.
Of a larger group challenging or shared services as far as that issue.
It's actually being taken up by both major cities, the Department of Ecology. This, this really is a federal issue. And it's, it's reached the point where I, I think Ms. Selton is exactly right because we can't, we have, we have an insoluble problem and an unaffordable solution. And we're not, you know, we're not, while there's undoubtedly PCBs in our wastewater, the, the contributions from the people living in the city to, to those PCBs are there and there's no, there's no way we're going to get them out of surface water with anything that we do here based on the longevity of the PCBs.
Well, and, you know, my entire career has been spent on wastewater treatment. I'm well in favor of all kinds of amazing technologies, but not when we're just kidding ourselves.
Yeah, well, it's, it's.
This is really what we're doing.
It's unachievable and unaffordable.
And pointless.
Yeah, well, it's.
But to my point, instead of College Place making an argument, this has moved on then from having a big brother helping us.
Yeah.
It's gone now more to a federal.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's gone more to a federal.
Okay.
And then talking with bigger brothers because the initial thought was to tag team with the city of Holman on this. However, I talked to my counterpart over there and the stance they were taking out really think is wise, which is pretty much put our heads in the sand and then if someone sues us, then deal with it at that point. So I, I think there needs to be some discourse rather than just saying like, I don't hear you.
And, and I, it's important to know, as you said, it's a federal issue. It's not something that our legislature can really solve, but our legislature can help put pressure on the feds.
Yeah.
So that's why I, I would argue for, I, I, I mean, the, I agree with the reclaimed water issue and that actually is a huge issue between King County and the cities inside of King County. But I don't think it's really our issue. I wouldn't oppose it.
We can fix that.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, comments?
I talked with Representative Neely and Jenkins last week. They had some misconceptions about our capital budget and where the money was coming from. They thought that, that our request for well number one was state funds. And they not, I'm pretty sure they now fully understand that it's a federal pass through and the only reason it's in the capital budget is that it moved from one department to another and therefore could not be.
The other one? And then before we move on to the last thing, there is basically two legislative agendas, one for state, the other one for federal. Quite a few of them are the same. There are some differences. I'll go over the differences. One is that there's a push for a remote transition parity act, so basically larger sales tax on federal level for buying stuff on the internet. So there's a push for that and it, and it looks like there's some traction behind that. Another one, which I put in there, which didn't appear in the state one because they don't really control that, is protection and enhancement of the community development block grant programs because back, back in the olden days, the lease line was over in Illinois, it went to the counties and then the counties really took a good advisory role as far as distributing it to the cities. So everyone got a little bit of something. It's not like everyone got everything, but you got something. It's gotten to the point where either your entitlement community such as Walla Walla because they're above the population threshold, which is twenty-five thousand, or you participate in the state community development block grant program, which we tried to. But I'll just say, if you aren't one of the favorite children and, and you aren't very desolate, you aren't going to get any fun. And, and that's been the problem. So that, it really needs to go back to how it was. And then supporting the city of Walla Walla Tiger Grant Request for the connectivity project, that's that Meyer Road project I came to council with a couple of meetings ago, which would open up the commercial drive, which would help us. Naturally supporting our regional airport and then the milk creek studies and then opposing unfunded mandates, but pretty much beyond that, it's very similar to the state agenda.
Has anything been discussed between us and then our neighbors about the, the inter tie? We used to use Walla Walla Water nine months out of the year. It was only during the summer months that we used our own wells.
I continue to haunt them about that. That's definitely something that.
It was just all political, you know?
Yeah, because I turned in a proposal to Walla Walla because they wanted to get into a debate about the old agreement and I said, let's not rehash that, let's do a straightforward normal agreement.
Yeah.
And every time we get to that point, so we got other stuff to do. I said, well, it's not important to you, but it's important to us, so let's do it. And we're in the same boat with the port of the Walla Walla because they need the inter tie agreement with them for that whole industrial area up by the airport. So we're working together to try to put exclamation point on that issue and get it done.
It was cheap. We paid like hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for water.
Yeah.
You know, and it didn't make any difference to them that they lost that revenue, didn't even phase them.
They, the big sticking point is they want to charge us commercial water rates.
Right. And, and my proposal has been much like any other inter tie agreement you would see in most places, which is you establish a wholesale rate. Doing commercial rates, frankly, that's a punitive measure. And where I've been at with this, yeah, they're helping us, but with their town center development, let's say someone went haywire with their water system, either we can mutually help each other or if you charge us a commercial rate, guess what? We could do the same with you, so let's not go there. So that, that's where we.
Sounds like they don't want it very bad.
Yeah, well, we'll continue work. I believe.
Just dump their extra water in the river like they do.
And I, and the PCB issue should be on the.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great. I appreciate all the work you did because it, it's really nice to have it in, in a nice one pager that you can use. Although I do think we ought to lay in a supply of bats that say capital budget on them.
Yeah.
And take them with us when we're gathering.
Well, I, I think this, I think this year we're going to have to go over there quite a bit to reinforce the issue because through my resources in Olympia, there is a push by some to push it off until twenty nineteen. And that's crazy. So I think, I think.
Mike, are they sitting on those funds right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
The money's there.
Yeah.
So there. This, this is all about water being held hostage.
Yep.
Yeah. Pretty much you won't let us put private wells in the county, so we won't let you build capital projects. Pretty much the person who's having that is actually the former Southeast Reckless and Paul Faxmark Schussler. So, and I've talked.
What are the.
I know.
I'm sorry, I can't use those.
No, I, I dealt with them the whole time I was there, so.
Turn off the mic.
But, but I've talked to him and pretty, and pretty much every time I've been telling him, just do something, you're hurting everyone. It's been to the point of, well, if we can't build, they can't build and I'm writing that argument until the end. So we're just really going to have to go there and keep bugging until we get our capital budget. One thing I want to add with that though, is that the port has the R F P out for the lobbyists because as you recall, Trent House resigned. The one caveat to that, which I think I mentioned at earlier budget meeting a while ago, is that the city of Walla Walla decided to go out on their own and hire lobbyists. So the local government coalition still consists of Walla Walla County, us, and then the port, but the city of Walla Walla is doing their own deal.
Mike, are you, who's the county commissioner that is our, represents us? Is it?
Mike Frederickson.
Jim Duncan.
Jim Duncan is, is the District Three.
So you're, I mean, you're in communication with him? Yeah.
Yeah. I have lunch with him once a month.
Do you?
Yeah, he sponsored me a roadie, so, yeah.
Okay. No, it was an interesting comment. It's been a while ago, but he's, oh, yeah, I, I need to stop by and see College Place sometime, you know, and see what's going on. Yeah, that'd be nice. Yeah, I thought, oh, yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's, there's been a re-establishment of kind of an informal luncheon once a month with the port, the city of Walla Walla, city of College Place, and the county.
That's nice.
That we can, we can sit and talk without, without getting involved in the politics of what's going on, and that's worked, that's worked rather well.
So, yeah, we're, we should know hopefully who our lobbyists will be by the end of the month, because it's closing soon, and then we'll see. But the idea is that next council meeting, this will, I would like this to come up to vote, because the idea is, is the legislative session for 2018 is really short, it's 60 days, unless they argue again, that could go longer. But what that means is that we have to have our margin of use to give to our lobbyists, like immediately, because it's gonna kickstart right when 2018 hits, so.
So, last item.
Okay. Robert, do you want?
My on?
Yeah.
Okay. This is kind of related a little bit to the budget discussion, maybe in a little bit of an indirect way as well. We just received a letter this last week from Department of Ecology regarding the hammer falling on our stormwater permit. A few years ago, we got a letter saying that back, back in around 2019, we would be expected to be under the M P S permitting for stormwater, and this is the letter that Mike received, and I guess Mary received one as well, letting us know that that's in fact gonna happen. So, as you know, we've already established an agreement with Parametrics, they're doing a stormwater study for us. We're getting that started, it's moving through. Part of that's a rate study, setting up a stormwater utility. So, that's what this is all about. Part of that, though, is we need to be aware that as we go through that rate study process, that this is a new utility. Just for comparison, back in 2015, the city of Walla Walla did a study, and their stormwater utility ranged between $1.8 to $2.2 million a year to fund. So, you divide that by three, do a little bit of math, we come out to about $600,000 a year. Okay, now, we're not gonna be able to afford that, I don't think. Maybe even half of that's gonna be a challenge for us. But just be aware, that's, that's one of the pieces of the puzzle. Along with that, a lot of what I do back in my little office there is stormwater-related at one level or another, and trying to address those issues, not just from a permitting standpoint, but also just from a public safety standpoint, property protection, and so forth. So, what we're looking at ultimately is, as this stormwater utility comes on, we are gonna need some additional resources, not just in the field, but also as part of review. And part of that would probably be, part of that extra money for that utility would be related to personnel. Just for example, city of Walla Walla, their full engineering staff, I think is about eight or nine people. Again, divide that by three, and that, the equivalent would be about three of me here, that's just me right now. So, it would really help to have somebody to work a little bit more on the development, that's kind of what we're thinking. A lot of what I try and do support, Mike and the mayor, in terms of bringing in the money in terms of grants, which actually has a way of leveraging the time. So, we see some benefit there, but that's kind of the big picture. But this is the writing on the wall, or on the street, if you will. And we are moving forward, and we will be looking at capital facilities, we'll be exploring and investigating what we need to do. The other side of this is, is that stormwater, if you decide to treat along the sides of roads, can help fund our roads, let's continue to some extent. So, so there's some, there's some, there's some silver lining in the clouds, if you will, a little bit, and we'll be looking at that. We don't have numbers, we don't have a rate study, we don't know what the bottom line is, the numbers. Our intent is to really reduce those costs as much as possible, to move slowly into enforcement as slowly as possible, to kind of break the hit, the financial hit of the city, but at the same time, in response, so we can stay out of a compliance vote. That's pretty much what we have on that. Is there any questions I can add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. That's all we have for you. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss?
Real quickly, the hotel, or the lodge and tax, Airbnb's in town, do we have? We're connected with those websites, and we attract, if there are any.
We, what happens with those, this one sorts it, and then we'll, we will get the access from there. I'm sure there are some who are right now. If you recall, earlier in the year, we got Azabar to start auditing our various utilities. Right now, they, they've started with electricity, and they found quite a few addresses that weren't classified, this College Place, our College Place, so that, so we're working to maybe get some revenue there, that, because they shouldn't be paying it. But eventually, they're working their way to that hotel motel tax, and they will be looking at that, because they're the professionals in things.
That's right, that's right. Thanks for reminding me.
What? Other than budget? Or timing?
Timing.
Sarah, when do you think we, you would have your materials available? Would it be in a week or so?
With the.
The utility taxes?
Percentages?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
I'm out of town, the 10th through the 18th, that was my only concern, but.
The ninth would be in four, I mean, same time next week would be good for me.
I'd be late, as would Harvey, I hope.
What?
We have something on the night.
Are we ordering food now?
We can. We can. I don't know, what's the night?
It's a Thursday again.
It'd have to be in the evening for me, because 4:00 AM.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Most of our conversation. But, yeah, I'd say that that's safe.
So, what do we think of the ninth?
Does, does that work for you, sir?
What time?
Six.
Yeah, I think that should be, I mean, Harvey would be here at least. I would, could be a few minutes late.
Well, every minute late, you're extra, you'll be flogged one more time.
Okay, with those bats?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
No, those are state legislative companies.
Oh, okay.
Well, we get you elected.
Watch your language.
You watch your mouth, you mean. So, are we good with that? That was too easy, if that works, that's.
6:00 PM.
But mine's gonna be Survey Monkey, or whatever that was.
Doodle, that was great.
Well, we can do a doodle with 6:00 PM on the ninth.
Remind me on the ninth.
All right, get a little punch drunk.
If there's, if there's, if there's nothing else, thank you all for coming.
Wow, 8:01, Harvey, I'm impressed.
Hey.
Good work, everybody.
Yeah, well, Sarah's, Sarah has put in a great deal of time.
Listen to Sarah, always.
Thank you so much for the use of your power.
You're very welcome. Wouldn't that be a lesson to you?
I know. See, I didn't, I say like, now, now that I've said that, I'm probably gonna, right? In fact, now, the problem that I ran into last time is I didn't shut this thing down.
I know, like, sometimes I can shut it, and it'll go to sleep, and other times it's just, it just gets there.
And we haven't finished the water.
My goodness, you guys are.
Stay hydrated, man.
I had blood drawn the other day, and I was, or donated.
You will be a resource.
No, it's not so funny, they always hold your hand and walk you away, you don't want to even fall over.
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever been dizzy once.
Get some kids a new for yourself.
I've got, you know, I've just made platelets. They want my platelet, so I get this call from Tri-Cities. I said, if you guys would pay my gas. And I gotta sit there for two and a half hours, or two hours, as you, as you harvest my. Yeah, I don't think so.
How's your future looking?
Oh, pretty good, I'm, got a couple contacts here. It's probably gonna turn into something that I would probably work out of town and commute back and forth, you know, to keep a house here. So, yeah, still looking.
Good.
But.
Hi, are you there?
There's one of me in the town.
Yeah.
Because St. Mary's even had done away with her director of finance.
Yeah.
And, and, and they had some finance people there, but.